All right, we'll call the emergency city council meeting to order at 6:30, 5:31, I'm sorry. We have a quorum, we're only missing one councilman who couldn't be here. This is, this emergency meeting, we, I got a call this weekend, air conditioner doesn't feel like it right now because I filled it full of air refrigerant, but someone had that clubhouse rented and there's a five-ton unit up here above my head at the top that is no longer repairable. I did stick some refrigerant in it to get them through the weekend, but it's got a huge leak, so it's leaking pretty quick. It's an old R-22 unit, advised Mike about that, and told him we should get some bids. It needs to be replaced like ASAP or we're not going to be able to rent it out because it's not going to keep up. So, that's what this is. You guys had a chance to look at the bids. I did give a bid, by the way. So, it looks to me like all these bids are pretty much the same equipment. They're all single-stage, there was a new refrigerant that was brought out at the first of the year, so it looks like we're all bidding the same exact thing. There's something here that says five-ton gas electric package unit on Bob's. I think that was just a typo. It's not a package unit, it's a split system. You guys have any questions about any of those?
Mayor, I have a comment if you'd allow me.
Sure, go ahead.
So, I did go out and get quotes yesterday. I didn't need it because this is an emergency repair technically. I got quotes because I figured the mayor would probably send a quote in. Typically, he does work for the city at a reduced rate. Just for your own knowledge, I did not show him the other quotes. His quote came in absent the knowledge of what the other two provided, so.
The question is, when can it be replaced? How long will it take to get that equipment?
Well, just depending on what you guys decide tonight, it'll take a couple of days to get it, but I think it can be done before the weekend.
Awesome. I will tell you what, I will make a motion to approve the airfare to replace the five-ton AC unit, the clubhouse, for the sum of $10,500.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, thanks for reading that, Rick. Okay. I have a motion by Rick, I got a second by who? Ed? All right, is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? The motion passes. We'll adjourn that meeting at 6:00, 5:35. That'll bring us up to date with our workshop, so we will start the workshop at 6:35. I'm going to defer to Mike on this because Mike has most of the things on here. Hope you don't mind.
No, that's fine, thank you. So, I put a packet in front of each of you. On the top page is what Robert brought to me yesterday, some requests from the Quilic Shores Yacht Club membership, not him personally, but the membership. I have not incorporated all of those into this document. I left that because it was kind of after the fact. The top document packet that you have, the highlights in yellow are changes from what was existing previously, or what was previously discussed. Some of the changes that staff is recommending council consider are doing away with the idea of half-day rentals. We don't have any way to get the place clean if somebody rents it for a half-day and we've got a one-hour turnaround and somebody leaves it in shambles. There's no way we could have it ready for somebody for the next four hours. Beyond that, the cost of having a cleaning service on-call is exorbitant, especially for weekends. Whether they come out or not, it would still cost us quite a bit of money. So, I think that it would serve the city better, since this place doesn't really generate income anyway, to not undertake more expense in operating it by having somebody on standby to clean it because we don't have staff here on the weekends who could do that. So, in keeping with that, you'll see some of the red lines where it mentions the eight to noon and one to five. I struck those. And then, also, I struck the separate rental portion for the kitchen. I don't know why that existed, if there was a reason, but if they're going to rent the clubhouse, why would they need an extra rental for the kitchen? We should just include that. There's nothing stopping us from, there's nothing stopping them from using it without our knowledge if they rent the clubhouse. So, it just seemed kind of silly to me to have that requirement in there if it's not something we can readily enforce anyway. On page one, you'll see that we made a few changes, minor stuff after the fees that you guys discussed in the previous meeting, the increased deposit and the rental fees. We added something in there about the keys being returnable to the drop box outside the city hall door, and a notification that we close on, at noon on Fridays. We changed from seven days to two weeks prior for alcohol or large parties, which will require police officers for them to arrange that with the police department. It's kind of hard for the chief on a short notice, being short-staffed anyway, to arrange for coverage on those jobs. He's already juggling his schedule pretty much, and he's already working 60-plus hours a week, so I think it's only fair that we give them a little more latitude there for figuring it out. Why did I highlight the, in order to receive residential rates? Didn't we already require the next page, page two? Wasn't that already a requirement? Or is that something new? The driver's license? Okay, disregard that next highlight on page two then, my apologies. Some of the smaller ones are just typos that I corrected, non-significant verbiage changes. If you go down to page three, refunds and cancellations, we want cancellations at least two weeks prior to the date of rental, if you want a full refund. I forgot to change the second part of that. The rental fee shall be forfeited, but a full refund, okay, never mind, the second sentence is that the rental fee shall be forfeited, but a full refund of the security deposit will be made for cancellations received less than seven days prior to the date of event. So, you don't, you just have to lose your rental fee because basically you're keeping somebody else from renting it, the deposit rather.
So, on that one, are you going to go with two weeks or seven days? You guys down there is both.
Seven days, it looks like.
It said a full refund for both rental fee and security deposit shall be made for cancellations at least two weeks prior to the date. That was a X out, and then the rental fee shall be forfeited, but the security deposit will be made up for cancellations less than seven days.
We'll change that, they should both be two weeks is what we're recommending, right, Tiff?
Well, it says he's forfeiting the full refund if it's within seven days when they cancel.
Rental fee shall be forfeited, but a full refund of the security deposit. If, so, yeah, the deposit can go back to them, but the rental fee would not, if they...
Well, I think you're saying, what's the purpose of the two weeks then?
Well, the deposit is returned to them, they get the deposit back anyway.
For everything.
The deposit goes back to them after the rental is done anyway unless there's a problem. So, we didn't feel it was necessary to keep their deposit too, as long as they, just the rental fee...
Yeah, that's, you're saying the same thing though. The rental fee shall be forfeited, but the full refund of the security deposit will be made for cancellations received less than seven days. But if you cancel less than two weeks, you're still going to lose the rental fee, but you should get your security deposit back. So, it's saying the same thing, but it's got two different time periods. So, it says a full refund for both rental fee and security deposit shall be made for cancellations received at least, yeah, for two weeks prior to the date of the rental. Rental fee shall be forfeited, but the full refund of the security deposit will be made for cancellations received less than seven days prior to the date of the rental.
Right, so if you cancel more than two weeks before the rental, you get both the rental fee and the deposit back. If you cancel less than seven days before the rental, you lose your rental fee, but you still get your deposit back.
You don't get the rental fee back. You owe for the rental.
Okay, well, somebody, I mean...
Is that not what it says? That's what it was intended to say.
That's what it says.
Between...
Yeah, but if you're ten days out.
Between two weeks and seven days.
So, it should be just...
If it's less than two weeks, you lose your...
Yeah, so, I mean, there should be no reason after for two weeks then, because if you cancel, you know, more than seven days out, you get both of them back, but if it's less than seven days, you forfeit the...
Oh, I got you, I got you. Yes, yes. So, the second one should also be two weeks. No, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so, so you want it for two weeks for the...
Less than two weeks, right?
Right, less than two weeks, yes.
Okay.
They should both be two weeks. In the hours of use, we just clarified that the cleanup and everything needs to be completed by 10:00. The verbiage we had before was really vague. It just said you need to be done by 10:00, but it doesn't say you need to be finished and out by 10:00.
But we need to take out the half day stuff, right?
I just missed that one, thank you.
So, essentially, the half-day stuff is out of everything, is what you meant, right?
Yes, I want to, I'll end up going back and omitting that throughout if that's what council approves. Going down to the bottom of that page, there's mention of the civic club specifically. Now, this is an item you guys might want to discuss because I've heard from different ones of you, different opinions. My personal opinion, as the city administrator, is that if there's alcohol involved, they need to have an officer regardless, but if council wants something different than that, we'll write it that way as well.
The only question I had on that, and it was just the whole alcohol policy in general, we just take a Sinatra, actually went up there to try and get us an officer, and as short-staffed as they were, David did not have anybody available for that event. So, if that is the scenario, if, you know, whatever reason the PD can't provide somebody, will the renter still be required to have a police officer? Because it says specifically it'll be a Quilic Shores police officer.
So, I talked to the chief about that, and he said there's been a reluctance in his experience in the past on allowing any other outside agencies to fill those positions if we can't fill them internally. Is that still the case? Or is there something I should put in there that the chief should fill it with some, can fill it with another agency if he, if he can't fill it within?
I mean, here today, if the renter has to pay, right? If it's a police officer...
Right, it is.
He doesn't have a Quilic Shores police officer, Davenport County, Harris County...
Quilic Shores should have first option for it, but if not, we should, we should provide, it should be one there, even if it's outside.
So, when you brought up the two weeks, Mike, was that not for David to have enough time to fill that position because of that short-staffed reason?
It's intended for that, yes. But even if that, if something comes up and he's unable to, if he has a couple of officers sick or whatever, then does he have the latitude to fill it with an outside agency officer?
Yes, yes.
Then you should give him the resources to do that.
Okay, I'll write it up that way.
Or should he also be allowed the latitude to waive the requirement for the officer or something comes up at the last minute?
I don't think you do that, because you're requiring one for a reason. So, I don't think you waive that and you don't have one. I think you give him the latitude to go get one, and it is what it is.
All right, well, I'm thinking, you know, worst-case scenario, you know, you, two days before your event, you know, whatever the police officer that was scheduled to do it can't do it for, you know, whatever reason, and now there's nobody to fill that slot. You cancel the event.
Why is the renter not the one securing, and then...
The renter secures it through the chief.
Well, the renter's securing it, it just, it says on there, it's supposed to be a CLS police officer, so that's going to be through David to get that schedule.
Well, but it's Quilic Shore, yes, but should David be the one going to find somebody, their own police officer for their event, should he have a familiarity beyond the renter?
Well, so, I think there's probably something we hadn't even really discussed, and we probably need to discuss it with David. You know, I wasn't part of that conversation, I don't know if you've had it.
But I don't think the chief wants to be negotiating, because our pay would be different from Davenport County's pay, and the city pays, and he has to pay, I don't think the chief wants to be the one negotiating that with the renter. I mean, he can get, we can give us a list of, we could give our agency, the job to them, and some kind of communication to know that a police officer has been secured.
So, we do have reserves that need to work.
So, it's, it's already stipulated that it's $60 an hour for the officer with a minimum of four hours. That's for any officer, we, we'll make it so that that's for any officer that fills it. And just from my experience, you typically have a string of officers who are willing to work a cash job, and I'm sure the chief will know that, but I will discuss it with him. It's not a heavy lift typically for him to find somebody out, from an outside agency to work a job, but that's a discussion I would like to have with him, for sure.
And is he willing to do that? Because I keep hearing over and over, like you just said, or somebody just said, he's working 60 hours a week, so is that something else we want to add to him? Just throw that out there. I don't want to hear complaint, well, I had to...
No, it's a valid point.
...look at that, you know.
It's a valid point, but there are ways around that too. Getting a list of officers who are willing to work, that he's aware of, that he can trust, that he feels comfortable with, and then we could have another member of staff call those off of the list if he can't fill it.
Okay.
I think Alan's trying to volunteer for that job right now.
Yeah.
Alan, you know, Mike, step, step up there so people that are watching the thing can hear you. They won't be able to hear you on the video.
Yeah, they'll be able to hear me, once they got you.
Hey, we'll be able to hear you just fine.
My name's Alan Batchelor, 1024 Forest. I just have a question, out of curiosity. In the history of rentals in this building, has there ever been an officer's presence required? Just ask, ask him for a friend.
It actually has been in there for a long time.
It's been in there. No, I know, I know it's, but it hasn't ever been needed.
Oh.
Ah, okay.
I see what you mean. Well, when there's alcohol served, that's a need.
I get, I get all of that.
I know, I'm, I hear you. I had to have one for my baby shower, so I hear you.
Has there been an incident?
That's, that's really not a fair question, because the incidents, because the presence of the officer was relevant to preventing anything, I don't think the question is valid. I'm not trying to be demeaning, but how can you say they were never needed while they were there? Well, that's what you're asking us to do, though. It's a Schrodinger's cat, and I can't prove that. I've only been here a year, I don't think we've had any brawls here since I've been here, but...
All right, good, good question, boys here. We wouldn't want you to get out of control, so I think we need...
I absolutely get that, I'm, I have no problem having an officer on the ground, standing by, none.
But I think that was the intent.
So, Mike, does that help you with how you need to go back and write this for the officer piece, the officer requirement?
Yes, I would, I would go back and write it that way and bring it to council after I talk to the chief to make sure he's comfortable with it.
Okay.
Quick question on what percentage of the rentals now, is it coming more outside parties coming in and party planners?
Susan, pull your mic up.
It's not on?
It's on.
Let's go talk to you.
Okay, is it...
I think the volume's down a little bit.
Is it more, obviously, it's usually probably more residential, correct?
That's, that's a tough question.
And do we have, though, a growing population of party planners or outside?
There aren't much time, there's some people from other...
What's that? Yeah. And how much time does it take for you to...
Tiffany, use your microphone, please. Thank you.
How much time does it typically take for the staff to have to handle all this? I'm just trying to understand what the time element is, to handle someone coming in and deposits and...
Oh, no time at all. Just go up outpatient, pay the deposit, make sure it's not booked on that day.
Believe it or not, there are plenty of people that don't live here that use it. I mean, there are a lot of people that rent it. I know they were just doing a couple of graduation parties here, there were people that didn't live here. I know one of them came from Texas City, I know that only because they didn't make it, get the key, and they caught me in the parking lot. You know, you kind of look like horse shack when you do that, right?
Yeah, I get, I get a lot of that. Alan Batchelor, 1024 Forest, to all my fans out there on YouTube. This facility for decades has been the cheapest rental facility, and now with our increased seating capacity, has anyone looked at comparable rental rates? I mean, where do we, we used to be the best deal in town, both sides of the lake. Has anybody looked into that? Are we still there, or...
We actually have, it's been, what, a couple of years ago now? Steve, we're just brought that to council, before your time, Mike, and he wanted to, he wanted to raise it so we would match KMA. The difference is, there's a lot more amenities to what some of the other buildings offer, and at that time, if I'm not speaking out of turn, I think council decided, we don't want to push rentals out and no one rent it because we're too expensive, and I would say the main part of the rentals here are the perk for the citizens and whatnot to rent it. So, at that time, the body elected to not raise it to be as competitive as others. I think that's one reason we're trying to raise it some now, but we don't want to get out of the ballpark to where it's never rented, you push yourself out of the market, so you're trying to lay, make a little money to cover some of the expenses. Cheryl's not here, but you probably heard her saying past meetings, this costs us money to rent, we don't make any money, and so it costs us the money to maintain it too. But yes, we have talked about that in the past, it doesn't mean we can't talk about it again.
Are we still the best deal in town?
I'm pretty sure we are. I'm pretty sure we are.
I've been looking for, I've been looking for a location for another event, and not close to this, so we're good.
Are you, are you wanting us to stay the best deal in town, or are you wanting it to...
I was just curious.
I was just curious.
They know, they know where we work.
Yeah, we're still the best deal around town.
I agree.
So, continuing the, with the kitchen cleanup at the top of page five, I added a line in there about thoroughly cleaning the kitchen, or the renter will forfeit the cost of the cleaning that the city bears, plus a $50 administration fee. If we have to have the cleaning people come in and clean it, that will be forfeited from their deposit.
So, that's how we're handling the cleaning fee, is by upping the deposit? Okay, I had made a note tag that question.
Not, not upping the deposit, but taking the cleaning fee out of their deposit.
Please from the deposit.
Yeah, I added a little line in there about parking, just to make people aware of the city-owned adjacent lots front of Marina Bay, if they want to shuttle some of their attendees back and forth to there, because I've had to explain that to some people already in my short time here, that we have those lots up there if they're having more people here, because we don't have much parking, and we don't want them lining the streets. And that always comes with the caveat that if it's a busy night on a weekend, those lots might be full, so you need to contact Stewart Elementary and the school district to make sure they can accommodate anything you want.
Yeah, and should we just draw like a little map, Mike, and show this parking lot here and those two over there, just so they would know?
We can. We can do that with a Google Earth image or something.
We, we don't give them any kind of parking plan at this moment, do we? Because I know on the weekends, there's, there's some residents that fill up this side of the parking lot already.
And, and that lot across the street, that vacant lot on the corner.
Yeah, but we don't own that lot.
I know, but they...
So, we can't really advertise that one.
Tiff, we can work on a map for my handout.
Tiffany, is there anything that you want to make sure that we add to this? I mean, the reality is, you're, you're the main resource for this building, and you deal with all of it, so please speak up.
Mike, there, there is one thing I'd like to add, and I don't know if it, where it would be, it would be decorations or what, but apparently they had an incident here last month where somebody came in here and lit some candles and then left, and the candles were burning. Not a good thing in a wooden building. Can we put something in there that, you know, no open flames?
Flameless candles.
Yeah, flameless candles are fine, but I mean...
So, if, yeah, I wanted to talk about that with you all. What about like the sterno candles they use for chafing dishes and that kind of thing? If we have people serving food and chafing dishes and keeping it warm, has that been allowed in the past with little sterno candles? Or is that, because if we say no open flames...
Twelve years ago, we did that, but to me, that's, that's different than an open flame.
Yeah, I was saying...
Well, we can write it up specifically, sterno camp, sterno-type candles only for chafing dishes and no other open flames? Okay.
There you go.
Well, if you drop a match on the floor, it's going to go up pretty quick.
Just jump in if I'm forgetting anything. Well, well, actually, yeah, let's go back to the civic club rental, if you guys don't mind. We kind of glossed over that and skipped on to something else, but there was, there were differences of opinion that, that I've been privy to from council and the city attorney as to whether we want to require civic club to have an officer for serving alcohol. Is that something you, you want us to include in there?
Yeah.
That if there's alcohol served, it's regardless of who it is? Good.
Yeah, I think that's going to be more for a liability, you know, regardless of, you know, who's renting it.
It is. That's it. Right underneath that civic club portion, I included another one for other nonprofit entities. And the way I wrote it was, nonprofit organizations may rent the clubhouse for a reduced rental fee of one-half the resident rental rate, however, they must comply with all of their rental requirements. So, this is probably a good segue to talk about the yacht club. And on one of the sheets of paper I put in your folder was a request from the yacht club, and it includes, "The clubhouse for monthly meetings, zero cost if we agree to schedule them in advance with the city, and agree, agree to move our meetings to another date should they conflict with city or paid events. Be able to use the CLS clubhouse at zero cost for special events if these events are scheduled in advance with the city and no other events conflict with the date. The yacht club would agree to the same rules and regulations as any other entity wishing to receive the clubhouse, or reserve the clubhouse for a private event, including the hiring of police officers, should that be required. To be able to store certain non-perishable items at the clubhouse within the area previously provided." Do they, do you store stuff here now? It's up there now with the civic club stuff? Okay. So, basically, that's to continue as-is. Then, to receive mail at the address of 931B Cedar and a mailbox clearly labeled Quilic Shores Yacht Club. Not sure I would recommend that to you guys. I talked to Robert yesterday, and they have a post office box where they currently get mail. I don't know if we want to add another address to the clubhouse where we have any responsibility for maintaining a post office facility or anything like that. And then, the, the final one is just to consider and vote to agree or not on these conditions. So, really, my, my ask of city council is, do you want to extend the same offer to the yacht club that you currently extend to the clubhouse, or to the civic club? Now, my understanding historically is that... Now, my understanding historically is that the elected body never voted to waive fees for the yacht club. Christie, we couldn't find anything on that, could we? So, only the elected body can waive a fee that the body sets. So, the yacht club has had use of it with only a deposit and no rental fee. So, we, I, I need to move forward with that, or continue with that. Council has to make a decision on whether that's the way we want to remain, or whether we want to make a change to that.
To do that for the civic club at some point in time? "We," not being those of us here, but.
Christie, did we vote to do it for the civic club, or is that just a practice that we've undertaken?
I haven't researched. I know it was in place when I started here.
Okay.
Have we dated anybody in this group?
Yeah. Bruce, do you want to go to the?
Bruce Settler, 808 Elm. I do want to make a comment that the civic club and us have been doing a lot more things together, you know, than in the past, like they're participating in our Independence Day thing that they've done in the past. They're volunteered to do some of our cooks, like for Thanksgiving and stuff like that. So, I do, there is a conversations going back and forth between the yacht club and the civic club to do a bit more things for everybody and to do more things together. Just a comment.
Question regarding the civic club. I mean, they do contribute to things for this building often, don't they?
My understanding is, they purchased at least half the cost of the chairs, and they bought some other stuff for the city.
All the window coverings, the refrigerator.
I think it's quite a bit, and I guess that's where I kind of see them as the style of the civic club is typically for the community and to give back to the community, whether it's for the scholarships, or the gardening, or whatever they do. And I, I'm not saying the yacht club doesn't, but that's a big give up from what I've seen of, from the civic club in the few years I've been here. Particularly the chairs and tables and other things they bought.
They partner with us again, a lot of the things.
A lot, a lot of things, yeah.
Mr. Bachelor?
Yes, they do. Alan Bachelor, 1024 Forest, again. "I was instrumental in writing the bylaws for the Clerk Shore's Yacht Club about six years ago, and it was intentionally written to not conflict and to add to the Clerk Shore's Civic Club. As a president of six years and a treasurer for two, twenty and change years ago, I saw the Clerk Shore's Yacht Club being a great addition to this neighborhood and a partner for the civic club in other venues. The civic club is very child-oriented. We did that on purpose. The yacht club is not. We did that on purpose. We work with the civic club at every opportunity we get, and that's a lot. And if you pay attention to the yacht club, you'll see a lot of hand-holding back and forth throughout the entire year."
Robert, aside from your monthly yacht club meetings, how many times does the yacht club rent this or need this, have an event in this building?
I would say probably between two to four times, probably less than that even.
A year?
A year.
Do you know what events are on your calendar for the rest of the year?
We do, we do have a calendar. It's come out, it always comes out post-civic club calendar, because some of those, again, as Alan mentioned, the yacht club is new and respecting their fixed dates and trying to do work within them. Yes, we do have a few dates. I think the use of the club, if I'm not mistaken, clubhouse is only going to be two more times this year that would be outside of the, that would be within the ask. There may be some other events that would be paid for and that, that may be yacht club members, but that's, that's kind of a different, different equation not to fit under this ask.
Thank you. So, you have one item on here about the storage. I'm assuming that's the storage that you still use up there?
Yeah. That's correct. So, currently, there's a, a small space up there that, that we've got a few things. And one of the reasons for having that space is to consolidate and let access be to whomever needs, right? So, whether we're cleaning up, we're putting away, we're taking out, we're joining the civic club or the civic club members or yacht club members, and we're trying to do that to kind of formalize some of that space.
So, so one thing I would mention is, you guys have been working with the civic club with their space. That basically was their space exclusively until you guys were formed, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
That's really not us. That's really them.
That's also correct.
So, I would continue working with them. I know I have probably already made the historic committee really mad because we wouldn't give them that whole room that they wanted.
No, that's correct.
But we couldn't because we still use that room for, for things, you know, during court and things of that nature. So, it wasn't because we didn't want to. There's just no space.
Correct.
But I, I would just encourage you to continue to work with them. Unless we blow out the end of this building and build on some space, there's really not much more space to give up.
So, for, just again, for full transparency, I know that Mike mentioned it. So, reaching out to the membership and asking, "What is the ask?" Because we didn't have an ask on the table. Whether, whomever has been a party to any other relationship we've had, it's always been kind of unwritten. And it's been quite amenable, and things are working well. So, there was a need to have a formal ask, and this is the formal ask. Not expecting it all to be a yes, but it had to come from the membership. Historically, current members, new members, and this is kind of where that is.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mike, I like where you came up with the nonprofit organizations for a half of a residential rate. So, I do think the civic club should, there, how it's written here with no, no charge should stay. I'm wondering if maybe we allow the yacht club to not be charged for their meetings, but their special events, they go at that, because y'all are 501(c)(3), so they go at that half rental, you know, that nonprofit rate. And then, you know, the rest of the stuff here is, like you said, Randy, in regards to the storage piece. Just a thought. Or do my fellow council members feel that they need to be charged for their meetings as well? Because how long are your meetings, Robert?
Usually about an hour.
Hour, yeah.
Maybe less.
Yeah.
We have, we have one a month.
One a month? So, you have 12 meetings?
12 meetings a month.
Two to four events a year?
Correct.
You have alcohol at those. You need an officer, by the way.
We, we historically have always had an officer.
Good answer. I think Amanda was asking y'all a question.
Think about it. I see Rick is thinking, so. Just starting that conversation, because we got to come up with something.
So, Amanda, your, your suggestion is their monthly meetings, no charge, but any special events would be charged at the 501(c)(3) rate?
Right, because we're going to have that for other nonprofit entities anyway, so then that's where their rental rate would fall. And then, just like any other entity, they have to abide by all the other stuff that's in the clubhouse rental agreement.
Do they require the deposit as well? Everyone, okay.
I think everyone is required.
Well, they've got a standing, you've got a standing deposit, don't you?
Yeah, so the yacht club has had a standing deposit.
Right.
For, I guess, eternity, to some degree.
I know we've had, the Boy Scouts have used the building a couple of times. And I think all fees were waived when they were using it. This was a few years ago.
Have to come to council. It probably didn't, but it would have to now under this agreement, this new agreement.
Legally, any fee that council sets cannot be waived by anybody but the council body.
Why are you looking at me when you say that? I got it. Why do you think we're here?
What about yoga and any of those?
Just, just set all that aside. Those, those things would have to comply with anything in this. And Tip's question, if you didn't hear, was what about the yoga classes and that kind of stuff? Unless there's some special consideration council provides, everybody who rents the place has to comply with these. So, and I will write it however council wishes, but it has to be council's decision.
So, would they have to do a rental rate every time they rent, three times a week?
Yes.
And a standing deposit?
They could put a standing deposit in there.
But rent it every, every day that they use it?
Or, I mean, is there a way, I don't know, to have some kind of contract that has, allows you to have multiple dates or something?
If you enter into a contract.
Have to be by date?
I'm going to try to put on my attorney hat without completely screwing it up. If you enter into a contract separate apart from the agreement, the contract takes precedence over the agreement if the council body approves it. So, the contractual factors would be what was, whatever had to be abided by. So, if you chose as a body to enter into a singular contract with a yoga instructor to use it X number of days a week for X number of hours, you would set the terms for that rental in that contract. And that would be separate and apart from this. So, that way, regardless of what happened with the contract, this is not changed.
Okay.
So, historically, have you guys been paying a rental fee for doing the events like the Commodores Ball and everything?
That varies. Sometimes, some years it has been paid and some years it hasn't. So, this year it was paid, and the officer was hired. I, 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 I'm just saying, that, that, he asked a question, I answered the question. I could, I could make a many, I can make many cases, right? I mean, as far as the flexibility, you know, in, in a real simplistic term, if the place is empty, gee golly gee whiz. But, you know, it's kind of hard to argue a point of, you know, that's nothing written on paper and we should write something on paper. Again, I'll defer back to the membership ask, right? If we can have all of those things, they would be great. That would appease every question, comment, answer from the membership. But again, this is, it's an ask. It's not a demand.
Right. I don't know, I guess, you know, my personal opinion is just looking at, you know, how much you guys do actually, you know, let's say, interact or intertwine with the civic club. You know, I would figure if you want to use this place, you know, for an event, that's not, you know, that would, that would say, you know, like, you know, we've got probably after the week around Christmas, you know, the month before Christmas, that tends to be, you know, very, very popular. You know, but, you know, an off time like that to be able to use it. You know, me personally, I don't think there would, we have not historically charged. I'd have no problem continuing that. But as far as abiding by all the other rules, you know, like, it's going to be something where there's going to be, you know, alcohol served, you know, definitely providing the, you know, for the police officers. That would be my opinion.
Well, I, I do want to make a comment about the police officer. For us as well, as, as a, as an entity, it's a liability for us, too. As much as it is for the city, it's as much for the club, right? So, we're going to do everything to protect, you know, the yacht club as we can or we need to, whether it's liability, whether it's law enforcement, all of those things. So, that's kind of a flat-out just baseline for us as well.
Another option, if council wants to consider it, is to put a maximum number of rentals that come at no cost to any organization. I've seen that in the past. You can rent it X number of times in a year. After that, you pay the full price. Just basically throwing things out for you guys to consider. It seems like we're stuck a little bit, so.
Would you say you don't even have, what do you have, three or four events a year? I mean, it's not like you're going to run out and schedule 20 just because you're not going to pay.
That, that's correct. That's correct. I don't, I don't think it's, I think that's the, the least of the concerns. We're not having a bunch of social events here at the clubhouse.
Right.
What we'd like to do is have a lot of events on the water. Right, I mean, that's kind of the whole yacht club idea, is to be kind of coexisting with the civic club. Civic club members are members of the yacht club. We encourage both to be members. Everybody that's in the yacht club to be a member of the civic club. Not everybody in the civic club wants to be on the water, fair enough. And that's kind of the harmony that Alan was talking about, looking at symbiosis between the two. No, you can't charge us to rent the water.
Do, do you charge your members for your special events? Is there like a ticket price?
There, yes. For the majority of events, yes. There are a few events that are, I'm going to use the term potluck, that there is no charge. Bring the potluck.
Commodore's Ball?
Commodore's Ball is a charge. There, there are costs with that. There's going to be entertainment. There's going to be decorations. There's going to be food. And those things are tied into that, and that's fair enough, right? But we do have, we did have, we do have an event. We did have an event this last year, which was just a potluck, white elephant type thing for Christmas, and it encouraged members and people to come. And there was no cost, but people brought food and gifts and socialized. So, it's a, it's a disparity between, you know, some are, I don't want to call them revenue generating, but some have charges and some are just donations. And I am going to speak a little out of turn that the membership may let me have it for, but I'm going to say it. One of the things that we have heard and we see is that the yacht club is not providing for the clubhouse. There's never been a formal nor an informal ask of what the yacht club can do. And as Alan mentioned, the yacht club is new relative to the civic club. So, we are very open as the yacht club and civic club members. And with relatively new slash different leadership of both groups, we are collaborating very closely and trying to figure out better ways to play together because myself and my wife, we are members of the civic club, and we do participate. And that is important to us, to have the freedom and the time to be able to participate and be within both organizations and not have that direct conflict. So, I think that one of the things that is going, that we will see over the next few months through the remainder of the year, is we'll see that collaboration, things tied together much better than they were in the past. And again, I think part of that is the newness, the freshness of both leaderships, as well as the changing times post-COVID. I hate to say that, but things are fresh and new. So, I think that's important for us to think about.
Well, and I think you hit on something where I'm going to disagree with Rick. I mean, the civic club has been here for how many years, Alan? And the yacht club is fairly new, and I feel like one has proven themselves with this community and the other is, is working towards that. And to me, there's that, I want to be respectful of that, and so that's why I was like, $125 to rent this building, you're going to cover that perhaps with a ticket or two or three to the Commodore's Ball. So, to me, that, every, you're getting it, they're getting everything else that they're asking for. But to me, I feel like it's not too much of an ask to have them pay $125 to rent a building versus not, versus giving them everything that, that we're giving to the civic club. Does that make sense? So.
So, would that be for all events or just events that are charged for?
For, not for their, I'm saying, if they have a special event that's not a monthly meeting, then the yacht club gets that at the nonprofit rate.
Well, I was saying, they do several things where they didn't charge admission. You know, just like to the potluck or the chowder cook-off or, or things like that. You just come. Right. Well, I mean, I, I mean, just, yeah, but I mean, just specifically using the, the building here. So, I mean, we want to, you know, charge, say, $125 for all events, even if they're not charging, you know, admission fee or something, or just solely for the ones that they would be, you know, charging admission fee.
I don't know. I feel like they need to prove themselves, but that's just me. The civic club, to me, has, has shown what they can do for this community. I'm not saying the yacht club isn't and can't and won't. But why do we want to give the whole house to give the whole house, you know?
Okay, well, here's a question I've got, too, you know, just like we were talking about earlier. The civic club has. You know, just like we were talking about earlier, the civic club has obviously done, you know, things for the clubhouse, you know, chairs, window coverings, everything like that. Was that something that was requested by the city? Or did they just come up with the idea and do it?
I'm not too new to know. The first time we bought chairs was strictly on the civic club to get rid of the heavy, god awful brown holding chairs with no padding.
That was the whole thing. You needed some padding.
The line form to the left, people line up to thank the people for the padding.
Well, I guess what I'm saying there, that if, that was just something. Right, okay, yeah. So, I mean, if that's the case, then I think that maybe as intertwined as the civic club and the yacht club are, maybe they should start working, you know, a little more together. So like I say, hey, we want to do this, we want to, you know, provide some chairs, we want to provide some window coverings. Or, you know, just whatever it, it might be that you want to do. Maybe start including the yacht club in that, say, hey, this is what we want to do. What can you do to help us out? And then when, you know, I, I'm just saying, you know, a little bit more cooperation between, you know, the civic club and the yacht club, your presidents.
So, so if I may, I think.
Before you answer that, let me just make a comment, okay?
Sure.
No offense to your comment, but I don't think we should be telling them how to run their show. If they want to do that, that's up to them. If they don't want to do it, just like Alan said a while ago, hey, the civic club's a civic club and really the yacht club's a yacht club. The fact that they, you know, I, I may speak out of turn and I may make some people mad, but I'm going to be honest with you. What events have y'all done with the civic club in the past, quite frankly? Because I, I don't know of that many.
Every Fourth of July we've been there, everyone.
Your, your tents been there and the yacht club's been there advertising the yacht club, but I mean.
Ask all the little kids who they got their ice cream from. Ask them.
I'm not going against what you're saying. I'm listening to you say one thing, that we're separate. These were for kids, we're adults. And I'm trying to put that together for Robert with Rick's comment. If you guys want to do some, I even mentioned to you a while back.
You did.
Maybe the yacht club can have their own scholarship, something that they give to the kids. Not to the city, but for the kids that live in the neighborhood, just like the civic club. But that's really not our place to be telling you what to do.
No, and I, and, and thank you, Randy, for kind of putting that in perspective. And I think that is a very fair comment.
I mean, you guys got to come up with those ideas.
No, no, at 100%. And I, Amanda, you're absolutely 100% right. I'm going to, I'm going to give a lot of credence to what you said, right? The yacht club needs, we need to prove our merit. And I'm not, I'm not against doing that. I've done it professionally, I've done it personally. And that's absolutely a fair statement. And I do believe, and I'm going to reiterate, the, the interest in the memberships between both groups, serendipitously on purpose, it's kind of irrelevant how it happens, but there is an interest to collaborate. I'm going to pick the, in my mind, one of the most interesting collaborations is the homemade boat race and the back to school party. And we made a conscious decision to make sure they work together time-wise, effort-wise, and so forth. And it, I would almost say it's fruitless to go through the list of how everybody plays together and what's, you know, combined and all of that. We could talk about, you know, the poker float and how that turned out this year and how that's open to everybody and so forth and so on. But again, being repetitively redundant, I'm going to say it again. We've got new leadership in both clubs with an increased interest, right? To be able to have a tighter community, to understand the difference between those that don't want to be on the water and those that do. And also participate in being good neighbors and good stewards of this community, period. And I think that, based on my time period here with the yacht club, with the civic club inside of this facility, there's not an outside screaming, yelling, oh my God, these chairs aren't any good. But if there was, I would like to believe that membership of both groups would say, these chairs are not so good. What can we do about it? Can we do a fundraiser? We've seen, I have seen, things go up and go down, events go up and down, whether the barbecue cookoff, the gumbo cookoff, we could pick all kinds of community events where we can raise funds and we could do it together, right? And that would be useful as a community. So I'm not trying to justify, I'm not trying to say, I, I, but I, I tend to agree with you, Randy, in the, in the more outspoken, I believe you mentioned to me something about raise your hand when you help. And the yacht club has not really been very good at that. And that's not a bad thing, it's not a good thing. But I think that's part of what, in particular, Bruce and I have been working on. The new vice president of the civic club, Madison, has made a, a strong effort to discuss and talk about. She's out of town on work, so she couldn't be here to have her, her two cents thrown in about the whole event. But I think that is a major shift that we will see versus 19, oops, and, you know, 2025.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. So we've got the island cleanup. And one of the things we put out there is we're going to do the water side of the island cleanup. Because everybody wants to be on the water, right? So the yacht club is going to take on the task of the, the water side, the Jarboe Bayou, the wet side of that cleanup. And, and again, to reinforce, not quite all, but the majority of the yacht club members are civic club members. So that, that too is something worth mentioning. We've had conversations and it's, it's, again, I don't want it to fit in this about the future. This is about today, nor the past. This is today. But we've talked about having kind of a collaborative membership process. If you join both clubs, there might be a discount, there's reasons to be part of both. The idea that both membership, membership totals have decreased for X, Y, and Z reason. And what can we do about that? Right, so we don't expect every homeowner in this area to be a membership of the yacht club, but we do expect a majority of the homeowners to be members of the civic club. So that's also part of our strategies between the two club leaderships. How do we make that happen?
I, I think with Amanda's comments, I think she's spot on saying, hey, you know, give you a reduced rate, let you prove yourself, because those are future things that you're trying to do. And we do want to work with you guys for sure. I, I think you're, you're spot on with those comments. I really don't want to tell you how to run your business, you know?
And, and that, and we respect that and we respect, we respect the reciprocal conversation and, and private and personal conversation. We're open to all the comments. Again, this, this document came from the historical membership and the current membership just said, what would we want if we had to ask for something? And respectfully, we're going to ask and with the expectation that something works out and the future will bring what it brings.
Based on, based on Alan's comments, you, you kind of got to be careful how much you intertwine with the civic club if they're going to be different or why not just be one? You know, so you have that challenge too.
It, it is, it is a challenge, but I, I am going to, again, I'm going to repeat myself is that there are a significant number, for example, some of our events that are upcoming are going to be a raft up at Redfish. There are a lot of people on this island that do not want to get a boat, get on a boat and go out to Redfish and spend the day, period.
Alan will agree to that. He's had a boat.
They, they, they just don't want to do that, right? There are a lot of people that don't want to get on a kayak or a floaty something and float around the poker float. But there are some that do and that is open to everybody. Come and play. It's $5 a hand. Get your hand at Jarboe, we'll see you back at Jarboe, right? So I think there's a distinct, there's a distinct thing between those that want to be a member of the yacht club because they want to get on the water and go down to O'Neills or up to O'Neills and spend the day and then boat back. But there is a, I won't say a majority, there is a large group of people on this, this island that don't want to do that. And they don't want to pay for it, they don't want to be involved with it. And if the civic club were sponsoring that event, there would be a political uprising, is why are we doing that? We don't want to be on the water. So that's kind of, I, for much history lessons I've gotten from many, many people in, in and out of the yacht club, that is one of the reasons the yacht club that came to be.
Anybody got any questions?
Questions, comments, answers, complaints?
Well, I think Mike's looking for an answer from us of what.
Correct, I'm talking about to me.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
So we're, we're needing to give Mike direction on where we want him to go with the yacht club itself, that entity, when he puts this together.
Ed, you've been quiet. Okay.
You made a valid comment and I agree with the reduced rate. Let's wait and see, you know, let them prove in themselves. And only for their get-togethers where they're charging, charge a fee.
So if, if I may, I'm going to, I want to, that was, thank you, Ed, good point. Two things I'd like to make sure that get in the minutes, not necessarily much more than that, is we do review this at some point next year. Give us 12 months or whatever as the yacht club to say, hey, gee golly gee whiz, how'd that go? Doesn't need to be a workshop, such a formal thing, but how are things looking and where are we going? And do we get in a better spot or a worse spot? The other thing that, that Ed said, which is kind of interesting, and I don't know how it gets documented, managed, I don't, it just comes to mind, is if there is a charge for an event, the yacht club pays. If there's no charge for the event, like a potluck, how do we fit that? That may be a mess and may not be worth discussing, but I wanted to clarify what he said. And, and, because that's different than what Amanda said.
So on that note, there is no way for staff to know if they're charging for an event or not? And so if we were to write that in there, there's no way for us to validate that, other than just take somebody's word for it. And please don't take that as disparaging, but you're, you would be setting a standard that we can't prove or disprove. Back to proving the negative or what have you, we wouldn't know. So if, if that's the way council, I'll caution against that. As far as us having to make a decision on whether they're charging for admission or not.
Yeah. And, and again, both of those comments are for the record, not necessarily for anything more than that.
As far as a reconsideration in 12 months or something like that, all you would need to do is, all you would need to do is come see us to see if, if you can get on the agenda to make a presentation to council. And so you do that through the city secretary's office and Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, but he can just get on, on the agenda to give a presentation to council from the yacht club in a year or so. Is that correct? Okay.
I mean, I stand on my recommendation, but I don't know what, if you need us to all agree to that, Mike, or what you need from us. But I have a feeling Rick may not agree. And so I want to make sure, if, if we need to have more discussion or what we need to do to get to a place where Mike can include this.
Well, Mike brought up a good point. My, you know, my only, you know, thing was if they're not going to charge for an event, they shouldn't have to pay the fee. But like you said, we have no way of actually differentiating on that, you know, like other than a, you know, than somebody's word. So I'm all for it, Ed, just for the monthly meetings, no, no charge, but for any of the events.
Well, I think it's fair to have you, I mean.
Yeah.
To come back in a year or so and.
Yeah, exactly.
Come back to us and see if we want to change that. Because we have to approve the fee schedule every year, right? And those clubhouse fees are included?
All the fee schedules are redone every year.
There we go.
So, you know, if it coincides, happens to coincide with that, that may be good timing at that point for us to reconsider that next year. Or whoever's on council at that point.
Yeah, I'd say if just, we could figure out when the, uh, fee schedules are coming up and then just maybe get on the agenda before that, uh, prior to that meeting. And, you know, just make a presentation then.
No, I, I, I think that's absolutely fantastic. And we'll, we just will plan and work around the, the normal budgetary meetings and, and see where we stand.
Is it possible to put the yacht club on here as a separate section, like you have the civic club?
Plan to do, right, Mike?
That's what I will do, yes.
Yeah. I would think that would be the best.
Absolutely.
Because we'll have a separate agreement with them, aside from.
Okay. You good, Mike?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I can write that up.
How much you two haven't heard anything? You all good with that?
Did I miss anything, Tiff? What about it?
So I have a question going back to the front real quick. So you had mentioned something earlier about PD and how much they're getting paid and all that. It may not be in here, so it may be in the other rules, Tiff. That's a cash payment due the night of, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I, I have heard that, that there were people in the past that didn't pay for two, three weeks later. So how do we police that, Mike? How, how do we do that?
We keep their deposit. Their deposit's bigger than that cash payment unless we have multiple officers. The deposit's $500.
We give them a notice saying.
Yeah, if they don't pay the officers, we take it out of their deposit.
You need to make it full or whole again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Date that it's a cash payment in here?
No, that's what I'm asking. It's, this isn't all of it, right?
It says a security.
This doesn't have to be agreement.
On the alcohol security agreement, it says the power payment to officer anticipating cash.
Okay. I knew that was in the agreement part. But we're not changing that, so it's not going to be in the other.
So that he got his, the officer getting their money on time, can they not submit that cash payment when they pick up a key? I don't know.
From what? Just from the history of the way that that has worked with the officer, the officer is paid directly back at this time of the, at the event. Because you don't know, you know, there are four hours or the, the 2:40 can be paid directly. Plus there's additional if there's more hours. And sometimes they may get partying in the event no longer, so that's a settlement to the officer at the event.
I think in the year I've been here, I've only heard of one time where the officer wasn't paid promptly and it was a day or two later or something like that.
Was there something about the kitchen, Tiff?
Yes, so all that stuff belongs to civic club? Right? We're going to let them use the kitchen without a fee? Is that what you put in there?
Yeah, that if they rent the facility, they get use of all of the facility because there's no real way for us to police whether they use the kitchen or not. But Tiff brought up a good, a good thing. A lot of that stuff in the kitchen belongs to the civic club. And so do we want to, does the civic club want to? As far as I know, people use it when they come in. If they use the kitchen, they're using the civic club stuff. But we have in here that anything that's lost or stolen, that's missing, has to come out of their deposit as well. So I don't know if the civic club does a regular inventory on any of their stuff in the kitchen. But the city will be more than willing to work with the civic club to make sure those things are replaced if we know, you know, in the right amount of time.
Tiffany, do we, we don't allow them to use the warming tables, do we? Aren't those off limits?
No, they can use them. They can use them.
They can use them?
No. The tacking table, they, we've been told that they cannot use the tacking table.
That's what I thought I.
It doesn't say that in here.
The warming trays, they.
Yeah, this, this whole.
The steam table.
Steam table, warming table.
That, that has always been, Alan Baxter, 10244. That has always been part of the rental since it's, since it was installed. The only caveat in there ever was in the civic club, oh, it's after the first remodel, when we got this stove, we had, if you'll notice on the back of it, where the gas comes into the building, there is an, a lockable valve. And, oh, I think McIntyre was the mayor back then. And it was up to the civic club and they charged an extra $50, the city did, on rental. None of that went to the civic club if they wanted to use. None of that went to the civic club if they wanted to use the stove, because once that gas valve is on, there's a half a dozen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight pilot lights that are pumping gas into the kitchen.
And there's a fee, yeah.
And there was a fee, I don't know if there still is for-
So, that's what that $50 fee is, that kitchen fee that's on here.
Yeah, so, just a, just a note there.
Once again, we have no way of knowing if they use it or not unless we're walking through and looking. And the officers aren't, the officers aren't typically going to know if they're supposed to be using the kitchen or not, I wouldn't think.
So, should we adjust our fee to accommodate that in there? And just say, here's the fee, you're getting the kitchen whether you want it or not, or, I mean, what do you do with that?
That's what we did, we just took that kitchen fee off, right?
Right, that's my recommendation, is just take the extra fee for the kitchen off. I can't think that using six pilots and a stove is going to cost the city $50 worth of natural gas. That, that seems like it would be a pretty small amount of money.
I don't know, I had to come and light it the other day because nobody lit it for them. I charge more than $50 an hour.
Well, we do have a sentence in here that they have to contact the city if they want to use the stove prior to the rental.
Yeah, so, that, that, that needs to be something we're discussing with them when they come in to rent it, is are you going to be using the kitchen or not, you know?
Well, that's what we did, that's what, that's how we would know, because we're telling them they have to pay that additional fee if they were going to have use in the kitchen.
Yeah, but like the young lady that didn't make it on Friday, she didn't pay for any of that.
Lock the door.
Right? She didn't pay for any, and so-
Well, that has been brought up too, if they don't pay for the kitchen to lock that door, but-
They climb over.
They climb over and unlock the door.
They will climb over that counter, right?
We have, we ducked up the turn, then a slideable, parking garage.
Yeah, so, so that was the other thing, and we're getting off into another subject, we'll talk about it later, but as far as securing that for court, that was the other thing, is putting like a little roll-down garage door over the top of that.
Either that or locking up, civic club locking up their items in there.
Well, they've already moved them into the cabinets, so really, you could just put some locks on the cabinets, and that would take care of that, but the other thing is just a little sliding door over that, our wooden door, that you can bring down and lock. But we could secure it if we wanted to secure it.
Keep in mind, my suggestions are just that, suggestions. If you guys want to go a different way with the kitchen and keep a separate rental agreement and, and fee structure in place for the kitchen, I'll write it up however you want. It's just a suggestion, because we don't have any real way of enforcing it, so.
Right, there's no one here to enforce it.
Right. And, and if the answer is, we look at putting down a roll-down window, putting in a roll-down metal door, like they have in every other concession stand you've ever been to, and that's lockable from the inside, maybe that's the way we go with this. And then, we keep the kitchen rental separate, and they pay extra for the kitchen if we want to do that. And it's just a policy, I can write it up however you want.
Probably like every other two rentals, or?
Now, understand, people use the kitchen even though they don't rent it. They'll go in there and wash whatever they need to wash, and if anything's out on the counter, they'll think that it's something that they can use. They may not necessarily use the stove, they will use the refrigerator, because it's not locked. So, they're actually getting use of the kitchen, even when they're not paying for use of the kitchen.
And ice.
And ice, yeah.
We plan on using it this weekend, do you want to work rate?
There's going to be a fee for that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind taking the kitchen fee off. I mean, if you rent the building, you rent, you get it all, but I do like the idea of some kind of rolling down door for court, but all left, I'm just thinking about the incident where we had a pig head left in the refrigerator.
It comes out of the deposit.
Yeah, well, I'm just reading how it's worded here, all leftover food, garbage, decorations, etc. must be removed from the building. And the refrigerator, I mean, common sense would tell you that's what that means, but...
And that group did not get all of their deposit back.
Okay, good, that's fair then.
Did we ever address the cleaning, like between events?
I don't think any of those fees are in there. I know it was 650 bucks for four trips. That's one reason we were going to go back to the one-day rentals. I did ask Jorge and Odie if they were interested in making any extra money, and they obviously weren't, because they didn't get back to me, so.
But that is a fair question, if we have it rented Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday, what happens overnight?
Nobody wants to come out on the weekend and clean event.
So, so when you had the conversation with the cleaning company, it was a flat fee?
They want a minimum, yeah, they want a minimum fee whether you use them or not, because they have to schedule somebody whether they're used or not. And so, it's one time a weekend, so four times a month, 650 bucks.
Assuming it's rented, four times a, you know.
Yeah, 650 a month, four cleanings per month, 125 per additional cleaning beyond the four.
Say that again?
It's 650 per month, which includes up to four cleaning, and it's $125 per additional cleaning beyond the four.
So, the city would be out 650 a month regardless? Yeah. I don't know what to do about that. How often do we have them booked back-to-back, like a Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday?
So, Ellen, you asked us if this is still the best deal in town? It is the best deal in town. Let me tell you why, we're fixing to spend $10,500 on an air conditioner. You know how long it's going to take us to get that money back? A long time.
When you're going to review these loads?
As soon as the yacht club does it. That's a good way to earn something.
Do we have, we have had, I know, we have had issues where people show up and it's not cleaned.
Yep. And luckily, in the past, they have just quickly cleaned it and used it. Otherwise, you know, I don't know if anyone said, hey, I couldn't use it, I had to cancel my event, I want my money back. I wouldn't know that unless, you would know that.
That, I, I don't know about that. I do know that, um, public works have come in here on Monday, and it's been, they cleaned up a mess.
What do we do about that?
Are there any services out there that we wouldn't have to necessarily have on a retainer like that?
Yeah.
That, you know, you can call up and say, hey, you know, can you guys, you know, it might obviously be an upcharge for them to, you know, come out last second to, you know, come out and do a cleaning.
I mentioned to, maybe put something out there, if we have any residents that are house, that does housekeeping, they might be interested, put some kind of an ad and see if we get any kind of response, since they're already here on the island, they may be willing to come up, but...
That'd be short notice.
Well, not if they're notified of the rental required before.
I mean, if it's not a huge issue, if it hasn't like been brought to the city-
But the reality is that-
I mean, the reality is there, but if it hasn't occurred, then maybe I'm overthinking.
Cleaning people, the normal cleaning businesses, the DK Dustbusters and all these people aren't really interested, that's why the pricing is such. Because they can't staff a short, last-minute cleaning. They have to know a week in advance. And so, those people aren't out there. I've called three or four of them before, I've just had the ones that we already use just give me a quote, and their quote was cheaper than any of the other ones, so that's the one I put in there. But they're just not there. Those people don't want to do it, that's why they say no. I, I would venture to say, if you ask Ronnie, they probably have somebody in-house cleaning theirs for them at their wedding venue, because people aren't going to do it. So, I, I will reach out to Jorge and Odie one more time and ask them again. Maybe they forgot about it, I don't know, but I'll ask them tomorrow and see, and then get that information back to you two, because that'd be the cheapest easiest, you know?
So, the only time it's an issue, and we have some flexibility with reimbursements and that type of stuff, so if, if like on a Monday, like Christie mentioned, if Jorge and Odie come in and this place is, is in need of, you know, cleaning or maintenance or whatever from the weekend before, they don't get their deposit back, so we can cover our losses there for a cleaning. The issue is the back-to-back rentals, or the two rentals in a weekend where there's not somebody here in between to clean, and that, that becomes an issue. And if we get a complaint about that, and the second reservation complains that, hey, it wasn't clean when I got there, um, we can always have the latitude to, if they had to clean it up before they could use it, maybe reimburse them some of their rental fee.
Take it from the other person's deposit.
Take it from the other deposit. And so, we're not really reducing the fee, we're just not returning all of the deposit, and we're granting it to the other user.
And we do have cameras, we have the ability to-
We have the ability to look and see.
If they come in and tell us that, you know, it was a total mess, or whatever, we have the ability to look and see if it was actually as they say, or-
I have done that on some of those considerations.
Can you look into the kitchen? A lot of times, that's what's been, you know, out here isn't too bad, but we've, you know, been in there, that the kitchen's-
No, the cameras are just in the main space. But if Jorge and Odie come in on a weekend, or come in on a Monday and the kitchen's trashed, they let us know.
Tiffany, if there's an issue with an event over the weekend, what are the, who, who are the renters told to call? Like, if they're not a resident, they don't know, like, there's a problem or something? But they, but they can't call you like, at that time, like, so, is that, that's not a concern? Okay.
I know before, they would call the PD to get a key or something, if they were not here Friday before.
Okay. Is there anything else we have to discuss on this, Mike? Did we cover everything?
Yeah, we have the agreements, with a few changes in those as well. So, if you go to the next page, the rental application agreement, all I did was X out the additional mentionings for the kitchens at the top, and then the rental fees for the half-days. There wasn't another change on there for that, was it?
Yeah, so, the top one-
Yeah, and those boxes for the rental fees.
Yeah.
Let me, I missed that one, thanks, Tiff. That corresponded with the, the four-hour rentals. And then, on the alcohol security agreement, I, uh, we changed that from seven days to two weeks before the date of the event for the officer reservation or scheduling. And then, on attachment B, the next page, I just added, uh, the key could be placed in the city hall drop box if after hours.
The only thing I'd like to say on that, if you wouldn't mind on the, I mean, we've got it in the alcohol security agreement, could we put it in the rules also, just so people would know if they do need police officers, you know, just, you know, coming to look at it? I mean, I know they'll figure it out when they get the rental agreement, when they sign it, but just have in there that it's going to be a cash payment to the police officers, you know, on that night. I mean, to have it in the rules, not just on the rental agreement? Okay.
Yeah, I can add that on there, on the first page.
You know, you can also put a drop box in here, too.
Just hanging on the wall over there.
Well, then, they need to be able to lock the door.
Yeah, they'll lock it.
Yeah, hanging on the wall outside the back.
Instead of them having to remember to come across the street to city hall.
We could, I prefer having the drop box right there by the door to city hall, because Tiffany checks it every morning when she comes in. It's just convenient there for her.
Have a question? Like, this weekend, we have to, is, when people rent this out, we're going to have food? Is there, uh, do they have to get a health department certificate or anything? Like, we, we have to have that down here for our event? And we have to have a hand washing station, all, you know, all that? No, we don't have to? Okay, I didn't know.
If you're hiring a caterer to come in, they're going to have their own health certificate? If it's just a private event where you're not selling any food and it's not a commercial exchange, then no. And that's everything I had on this, unless council has more input for me.
You think you have your direction now? Did you keep up those notes?
Clear as mud.
All right, we done with the, the fee schedule, moving on to something else?
The next two things we have are code violation ordinances. Uh, the first one is the weeds, refuse, and rubbish. One of the things Quilac Shores doesn't have in ordinance is the care and maintenance of rights of way. Most cities have, have it in ordinance that if you're, the right of way adjacent to your property line on your side of the roadway, or to the roadway's edge, is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. So, most of what the difference is in this is just that, that we are adding that it's, if you look at some of the ditches that people mow, that look manicured, to where the water still drains, it's all well and good. But if you look at some of the ones that Jorge and Odie have to go out with chainsaws and hack trees out of, that are adjacent to somebody's driveway, just because they don't want to take care of it, that, that causes problems with drainage and everything else. Most cities require rights of way that are adjacent to property on, up to the roadway to be manicured and maintained by the property owner. This is just basically a suggestion for that. There are a few definitions added to it to accommodate that, and this has been run by Dick, so a lot of these definitions came directly from him. But I looked specifically at some other cities in the area for nuisance abatement ordinances that had to do with rights of way and maintaining yards and that kind of stuff. And so, that's what you have before you for that. That is the biggest consideration in it, and like I said, it's just a consideration, it's my suggestion to make it easier on us for code enforcement purposes. If, if your driveway covers it and it's access to your house, you should probably be responsible to maintain it. And most cities require that. So, that's, that's my ask for council, to, to add that into our ordinance as it exists now.
So, when you say maintain, we're only talking about cutting the grass and whatnot?
Cutting the grass, trimming trees that hang too low- Cutting the grass, trimming trees that hang too low, so that they're hitting cars or you can't walk down the street, just those things. And it is specifically trees, weeds, and grass. It's, it's not uncommon. High grass and weeds is the biggest complaint we get. That's, that's what I look at most often. And usually those are accompanied by overgrown. Had one last week that we sent out on oak, because the bushes and, and things were so overgrown, that they were actually blocking the culvert, so there's no way the ditch could drain. But it's in the right-of-way, so we don't have a method for requiring the property owner to maintain that. But the bushes are growing from the property.
What about trees and bushes that are actually in the right-of-way and not on the property?
They just have to be maintained and cut to a certain level, to where they're not hanging out, hanging too low in the street for people to walk by or drive by. That was the only consideration.
And same, if that's not on somebody's property, if that's in the right-of-way, why should a resident have to maintain a tree or a bush that's not on their property?
It's my suggestion. It's, it's just my suggestion. Most cities require the properties, or the right-of-ways adjacent to your property on your side of the roadway, to be maintained by the property owner.
My suggestion is, is, I don't want to mow somebody else's property, we'll start there, but the other part is, that you council needs to consider is, we've got some really deep ditches. I'm 72 years old, I'm not manhandling a lawnmower through some of these, I'm not. Now, Earthworks has been mowing, I usually mow it if I'm feeling spry, but every other Tuesday, Earthworks comes in, and they do from about the middle of the ditch up to the side of the street. Because it's a bear pushing that lawnmower up. I mean, literally, vertically. So, something to consider.
So right now, Mike, does Earthworks take care of all the right-of-ways?
Some of them.
I was going to say, I see them out there cutting all of them.
I would offer to you that most of our property owners mow their own ditches and rights of way.
What's in the contract?
I don't know which ones specifically are in the contracts, I don't have it in front of me.
I got mixed feelings about it, only because we tell people that's our right-of-way, don't mess with it, you know?
Well, that's what I was looking up, I thought we had something that said you can't put anything in the right-of-way. Now we're saying if you have shrubs or trees, you have to maintain them, so I feel like it might be contradictory.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think if we go, we go to the city and take out all the trees that are in the right-of-way, that are hanging over the street, that's going to be a costly ask, okay? But then, we've also had them out trimming a bunch of trees at your request, preventative for, you know, storms coming, so I've noticed they've done a lot of those. I will specifically say there's a house over here on Ivy and Queen, that has several rotten trees in the right-of-way, that I'm not sure how they got there, but they're there. I think, I think we actually had one of them cut down that was in the right-of-way over there, because it was hanging over the street and had a huge hole in it.
Are you talking about on the north side or the south side of the road?
Nah, I think it was on the north side.
I had, I had one removed on the south side of the road that was in the right-of-way.
Yeah, I remember that. I think we had one removed prior to that that was hanging over. We just need to decide what, you know, grass is one thing. If there's trees in the right-of-way that are a nuisance, we should probably have them removed. But you're going to have some people complaining about trees being removed, too.
So, this is really intended not for the trees that are starting to grow in the right-of-way necessarily, but the trees that are on people's property, they're allowed to grow over the right-of-way and into the street, so they're low-hanging and they're hitting the cars and everything else, because the streets here are narrow enough. If you have to avoid the, the trees as well when you're driving down oak specifically, it's a mess.
I would say anything that's on someone's property hanging over the right-of-way into the street is probably their problem. And we need to be sending them letters saying, hey, trim your tree, or we're going to trim it and we're going to send you a bill. That's how it normally works. I would just, like Rick said, just be careful of what's in the right-of-way is actually ours. That's going to be a hard one to put on the homeowner. Matt, you're lying, I see you cutting your grass all the time.
It is not the ditch.
But I, I don't know what the code enforcement is going through right now, honestly, with Angie and having to enforce that either. I'm sure you know more about that than I do.
Well, the way we have it currently, if, there's, there's no teeth in it, from anything I've been able to find, if somebody doesn't mow their ditch.
Yeah.
And not, you know, the chasm that you have, but just your basic one-foot-deep ditch. And if it's got, you know, 12 inches of overgrowth in it, and we don't have any teeth for enforcement in the right-of-way that I've found, how do we get them to mow it?
Yeah, because you do have people come in and complain about it.
Well, and it hinders the drainage, we don't have any slope as it is, the drainage is a big issue here. And it will always be.
And is that drainage the responsibility of the homeowner for something that's in the right-of-way? Is that the responsibility of the city? I have a hard time making a homeowner responsible for keeping a ditch clear that is not on their property. It's something that we're responsible for as far as drainage, that's, we as a city, and I don't think it's right to push that onto a homeowner.
No, on the drainage side, we definitely are. But, do you want us to start being responsible for mowing every right-of-way adjacent to the roadway as well, that's part of somebody's front yard, basically? It's a continuation of somebody's front yard. It's a suggestion, it's what most cities do.
Yeah.
If council's not, if council's not comfortable with it, it's no skin off my nose.
So I, I think what Mike is saying, he just wants to be able to put something in there and says, hey, you need to mow your right-of-ways. You know, you mow your grass, you need to mow your right-of-way. If we start putting that expense back on the city, there's a lot of right-of-ways, right? And then most people do it. We start putting that expense back on the city, you're navigating more and more towards an ad lorm tag at some point. You know what I mean? So, I, I don't think it's meant to be a hateful thing, it's meant to just say, hey, you need to keep that up. I mean, how many people right now, other than the people that have the STRs, in my opinion, and/or people who are not here during the week, i.e. at the end of my street, those people come once every 30 days, Angie's having to send them a letter, and, and we're having to spend money on mowing their whole yard over there because they don't mow it at all? That does happen. But, we can't do that if we don't have something in place to get our money back or do anything about it. So it's just going to become an expense for the city, you know?
What about the ones we're doing right now? We've already got Earthworks mowing a lot of the right-of-ways, you know, with the ditches. Where, where do we make the differentiation there?
I would have to see what's in Earthworks contract.
Yeah, I had no idea they were mowing your ditch.
I'm mowing for the first 10, 12 years, and I found out that they were supposed to be mowing it. I'll mow it down to, for grain, if I want it to grain that out there to fill up the body of site. And I'll mow right down the middle of it, and after that, they do a major maintenance of the weak layer. It's done in two minutes.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send the contract and the diagrams out to council this week.
I, I haven't seen them.
So you know exactly which, which ditch lines they mow throughout the city. I know they mow the ones on drawer, we make them take care of those commercial area ditch lines. But those are really, those are steep bar ditches over there. But I wasn't aware that they were mowing any of our residential ditches, I'll have to go back and look at that again. There are several attachments to that contract, and I can't quote them all, but I'll send it out to council so you're aware.
I would see if it's in there, honestly, and just see.
I will.
I don't know that it is, because they've never come by my house and mowed it. I wish they would. You're lucky, you've just been getting it done for free.
If you're not comfortable with this, I'll just defer it, it's no big deal. And if it's something you want to reconsider at a later date, I'll bring it back written however you choose.
Well, I, I think, like I said, I think the purpose of that is, so when people come in and complain about people not mowing, we don't have a mechanism to send them a letter even, because there's nothing about the right-of-way. So, I don't think it's a hateful thing, or you must do this, I think it's, when people complain, if you're living next door to someone who's not mowing their grass, you're going to call in, too. So, right now, we have nothing, we can't do anything about it, you can't even send them a letter, because there's nothing in there for that.
When I think, as you mentioned, there's confusion in both ways, because of that, there is nothing. So there are some people who do firmly believe they shouldn't touch that ditch. Now, how much of that is an excuse, because they just don't want to do it, and how much of it is the other? But if we have some teeth in something, at least, that says, no, it is your responsibility, that's 80, 90% of the problem, probably.
And we're talking just for the right-of-ways or yards in general?
Well.
It's, it's basically manicuring, it's the same way you manicure your yard. So if you mow your yard, keep the ditch looking the same. Or the right-of-way area, I should say, not the ditch, because it may not, it may be covered.
I thought it's about nine inches.
Well, nine inches, if there's a uniform height of nine inches or more, currently it's 12 inches. A 12-inch yard is pretty overgrown. My suggestion would be to reduce that to nine inches, because at that point, you're a mosquito haven anyway. But, the suggestion for mowing is just that it's manicured at the same height as the adjacent yards.
So, I just, I want to know what's in the contract. I mean, Earthworks does the ditches on Hawthorne on our side.
They do?
Mm-hmm. Every now and then Jay does them, but not very often.
I just can't recall seeing them mowing here.
So I want to understand what's in the contract, and I need to do a little bit more research with the other right-of-way issues, so. I'm not opposed to it, I just need more time.
Absolutely.
And information from you, please.
What would you like specifically, other than the contract? Okay, yeah, I'll get that to you guys this week.
Yeah.
On the subject, too, does this, or is there another place where it's covered as far, you know, you were talking about trees going into the street and everything, what about with the power lines? Is there something already in place for that, or is that something we need to include in this also? Because I know that's been an issue that we've had, were trees growing into the power lines. And again, if it's something that's in the right-of-way, obviously that's city responsibility, but if it's on somebody's property, then that's their responsibility. Is that already covered somewhere in ordinance, or is that something we should include in here also?
To my, to my knowledge, we have no ordinance covering that.
Okay.
What we do, and that's part of street, oh, he left, part of streets and drainage, the, the members of that committee notify me when they see trees, whether they're on private property or in the right-of-way, that are growing up close to the, the hotlines, the main lines, and I notify the power company, and they typically come out and trim them. If they're on private property, the power company contacts the actual property owner and works with them to get them trimmed, to trim.
Okay, now, isn't there a certain distance that the power company requires, that, you know, trees and branches have to be from the power lines?
The hotlines, at the very top.
Oh, yeah, I could say the hotline, yeah.
Yeah, they don't want anything that can blow onto it and touch it, or get so close that it can actually arc.
Right.
And, because they have had some discrepancies.
So I'm sure there's a distance that they've got, that it's got to be.
They haven't divulged that to me.
Okay.
They, they come out and lay eyes on them and say, that one's too close. Because with, given a specific distance with the wind, it depends on the type of tree, if it blows, if it sways, that kind of thing.
Well, I just think that'd be something that we ought to consider putting in there, too, that, you know, if you have a tree on your property, it's got to be, you know, get an idea from the power company, and, you know, maybe err on the side of, you know, conservative, make it even a little bit further. Yeah, because I mean, it's, it's a huge, you know, pain in the you-know-what, anytime there's a storm, and, you know, you've got a branch that touches, and you hit the big pow, and then you, you start, you know, there's parts of the neighborhood that are going to be in the dark.
I've got a contact with their forest reg division, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Anything else on that one, or you all want to move on? So the other one is a rewrite of the junk vehicle ordinance, and the one that you have in front of you is almost purely regurgitated from state law. So, our current ordinance requires that to be a junk vehicle, the city must first prove that it's inoperable. I have no way of knowing if something's inoperable. I, I can't prove it. So there are no teeth in that ordinance. The only other ones are the boats that are in the water with the TX numbers, that would be a nuisance in our current ordinance. So, the, we're really lacking an enforcement ability on junk vehicles. So this is basically a rewrite that mirrors state law. So it makes it easier for us to enforce. It does have a requirement in state law that if it's, the vehicle is parted apart, or something like that, for more than a number of, of hours, days, it's considered inoperable and then can be enforced. But there's just no way for us to really enforce the junk vehicle ordinance that we currently have, because there's no way for me to prove the vehicle's inoperable, unless it's sitting there on blocks.
Take the stand.
Just a suggestion to prove if it's inoperable or not, I just had to get the tags on my Jeep, I have to have an emissions test, which, then I can buy the sticker from the state. If it's got an expired sticker more than a year, odds are it's inoperable, right?
And that's kind of how the state law is written. It doesn't, it doesn't say it's inoperable if it's expired, but it does require non-expired tags, or whole numbers, or whatever.
Sure.
And then it has a separate standard for inoperable.
Prove that one from the sidewalk.
Alan, the, the problem with the current ordinance is it starts off with, is inoperable and has expired, blah, blah, blah. And so, there's no way for us to know that from the get-go. I'm 0-for-1, I'll go with 0-for-2, if you guys don't like it. I'll still come to work tomorrow.
Right. So, according to state law, how do they determine that a vehicle, you know, is inoperable? What's their definition of that? And here, now here's my only, and here's my only thing, I just, neighborhood that I, when Sam, my first house that we bought, they had in ordinance, you know, HOA, and it was their idea, the vehicle hasn't moved in a certain amount of time. The problem with that was, I worked the graveyard shift, and I parked my vehicle in the same spot every time I got home, and we got a letter from them about a junk vehicle. Taxes were good, but apparently it hadn't moved for 30 days, but it was just moving at night. So we kind of went round and round on that, it was fun.
So, with inoperable, to me, inoperable, as, as the guy who actually has to enforce the codes here, to me, inoperable means it's got flat tires, it's in pieces, it's on jackstands, there's no way somebody can get in and drive it. It's obvious from the casual observer, that's not an operable vehicle. But even at that, it has to remain 72 hours on public property, okay? So if it's on one of our parking lots, then we take care of that, that's no big deal. Or 30 consecutive days on private property. And once again, that would be 30 days, it's sitting there for a month on blocks, or flat tires, or something like that. Those are less common than are, they're not everywhere, I'll say that. We only have a few places on the island that have interesting vehicle accumulations that are visible to the public. One of the things that this has in it, is that if you do have, if you are a collector of vehicles, that they all be currently registered. For instance, if, if a vehicle is sitting on a trailer for six months in your driveway, one would not consider that an operable vehicle. If the trailer's never moved for six months, you'd probably get a letter. But other na- But other than that, it would be something that's parsed apart, you know, that, that is obvious to the casual observer, it's not operable. But this doesn't just cover motor vehicles, it covers boats, it covers airplanes, I don't think that you have any of those parked there, but we have people with vehicles parked underneath their houses that are full of junk, that have been there for the year that I've been here, that's not an operable vehicle. And in, in a good hurricane, everybody else is going to know what was in that vehicle when it comes floating past their house. So, basically, this is just compliant with state law. Just so you know, I take kind of a different tack at code enforcement. I try to notify people and call them or send them an email or something like that. I've got a few people on the island, I've actually, there are repeat offenders that I actually reach out to personally before we send them a letter, and give them a week or two to comply. It's not intended to be a moneymaker, it's intended to be a compliance measure, so that's what we look for. But once again, the way it's written now, we can't do much about it, period.
Well, and your neighbors shouldn't have to look at that either. Takes away from their property value, too.
Well, if you do have a disabled vehicle, it's okay to have it as long as it's not visible to the public from a public right of way. And that's included in this, that's, that's state law as well. So that kind of addresses those things that are just junk vehicles sitting in somebody's side yard or something like that. You can have it, but nobody can see it.
Do we have any direction on this ordinance? You're good with it, the way it's written? To move forward with this and bring it to council, the way it's written?
And that's what this does? Good.
You guys good with that? Hey.
Like I said, gives a little bit of teeth to you to, you know, maybe do something... Right. I'm good with it.
All right, I'll, if, once you read through it and fine-tooth comb it, if you have any comments, please let me know, otherwise, we'll bring it back forward for consideration for a vote. Mayor, that's all I have.
That it?
Just, you know, five hundred batting average isn't bad, I'll take one out of two, that's good.
Anybody have anything else? Hurry up before Alan gets to the microphone. I'm kidding.
I'll thank you for your historical knowledge today, that would help...
Okay, we'll, we'll end this at seven.